Let the record reflect, there were no motions or decisions made during the special meeting. And I make a motion to adjourn the special meeting.
I second that.
I'm sorry, sorry.
Motion to go back in regular session.
Okay, motion to go back in regular session.
I second that motion.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Out of executive session, it could be a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn the special...
Special meeting.
Special meeting.
Anything about Steve Williams?
Yes.
Okay, Steve is a second.
Call him, move and speak.
Okay, Councilman Wells.
Aye.
To adjourn.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
All right. Public hearing, roll call, please.
Councilman Kip Andrews.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Wells.
Present.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
Public hearing, number one, an ordinance for the expanded conditional use requested by Enrico Rogers to allow a mobile home on lot 24, block nine, Greenville Park subdivision at 107 West Newman Street, zoned RS three. Recommended approval with the conditions by zoning commission, number one, the approval shall be with the understanding that such use is a personal right that expires upon a change in occupancy and ownership of Enrico Rogers, and two, must meet all placement requirements. Tracy Shalacy.
Good afternoon, everybody. Here to present this for the zoning board, they asked to recommend approval, placement of this mobile home at 107 West Newman Street, with the condition, this will expire if ownership changes and they'd have to come back and ask for permission for any new ownership, and they have to meet all the placement requirements for a mobile home in this area.
Is there anyone here from the public to speak on this matter? Any questions by the council, or statements?
Thank you.
Now, we'll go into the regular session. Roll call, please.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Wells.
Present.
Councilman DiViterio.
Present.
I ask that you please stand for the prayer. Councilman Andrews, if you'll lead us in prayer.
For the gracious love of the eternal heaven, Father, we just thank you right now, for this is the day that you made we rejoice and we are glad about it. Father God, we just thank you for your darling son who died upon the prowl so we too would have access to the tree of life. Father God, we just thank you that it's by his blood we receive pardon, we receive purification, and we receive protection. We thank you that everything will be done tonight decent and order and pleasing in your sight, and you will get all the glory and all the honor and all the praise. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Invite all active veterans and milita-- sorry, all veterans and active military, please render the proper salute.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
I'll take up the minutes of the February 12, 2019 meeting. Reports. I'm sorry, I just totally skipped that section. Reports, any council reports? Anyone want anything? Mayor?
For the sake of time, reports.
All right, are there any new businesses in the audience that would like to be recognized? All right, now, we'll go to the minutes of February 12, 2019. Need a motion for approval?
So move.
Second in motion.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
First, we have old business. Number one, resolution to approve downtown parking improvements. McGee excavation and development LLC contractor, Chuck Spangler. Do I need to read A and B?
Yes.
A, is that we're taking them separately, or read them both?
I think we're taking them separately.
Okay, A, we have approval of change order number two, final in the amount of $5,232.64.
Good evening, mayor and council. This is for the approval of the downtown parking improvements, the final change order in the amount of $5,232.64. If you can't look, you do have this hyperlink on your iPad. This work pretty much covered work done at South, in the 300 block of South Holly Street, 400 block of South Olive, and the 400 block of North Spruce Street, as well as the Michael J. Kennedy Center, the new parking area, the new decorative sidewalk and parking area at the 100 block of West Morris, and as well as the new parking lot at Pierce Aviation.
Any comments, questions? Do we vote on these?
Yeah, we'll just take up item 1A if you'd like.
Okay, I need a motion to approve item 1A.
Motion approved.
I second that motion.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Motion approved.
B, acceptance of work as substantially complete, commence 45-day lien period withholding 10% retainage.
Yes, now, this is to ratify the acceptance of work to deem this project substantially complete, and as well as begin the 45-day lien period.
Need a motion to accept 1B.
I make a motion that we accept 1B.
I second.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Number two, a resolution for the city council to hold an executive session for purposes of evaluating each of the top three applicants for police chief as identified by the mayor, and to review the analysis of their applications with each candidate to evaluate the qualifications of each. Following the executive session, the city council will issue an opinion whether each applicant is qualified to serve as police chief. Councilman DiViterio.
I'd like to amend the proposed resolution to read as follows. "A resolution for the city council to hold a public meeting with the mayor's appointee for public chief for purposes of public and council input, comment, evaluation, and discussion. At least one week prior to said public meeting, the mayor shall submit to the council description of his evaluation of the appointee in detail and education and experience, and all efforts made to evaluate the background and experience of the appointee, a summary of the findings, his distinguishing qualifications, and the reason he was selected, along with any and all notes, analysts, and grading scales and criteria used in evaluating the appointee. The meeting shall be set at a time that all the councils available on Monday, Tuesday, or Thursday evening no earlier than 5:30 PM, and a procedure for how the meeting will be conducted will be released in the agenda prior to the meeting."
Motion to amend.
That's a motion, now, I'm going to second to amend.
That is the motion, second, he made it, okay, second.
I second that motion.
So it was Kip Andrews?
Yeah.
Okay.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Motion approved to amend.
Does anyone have any comments or questions on that, from the council? Need a motion, a motion on the table for this? To, we just amended it, so, just approve it or deny it?
Motion.
Motion to what?
Motion to what, amend?
Approve.
To approve, motion to approve.
I'm sorry, could I ask one question real quickly?
Sure.
Since I would probably be preparing most of these items, what exactly, what exactly are you seeking?
Well, I just said what I was seeking in my write-up right here, just all the information that I would, I would, I would hope that all the council was able to review before approving the appointment of the nominee that the mayor picks.
I guess what I'm asking is, this is in addition to the information that has already been shared with the council?
Yes, in public, yes, in public input.
No, I think she's asking about the jury, you know, they, they gave us a big ol' long thing of stuff.
Information.
Information. Was that sufficient, or is there additional stuff?
Well, yeah, I mean, first off, I wanted to make sure everybody had the time to review all the information that was given to us. I think some of that stuff, I didn't really get to pretty much the day before yesterday, and so...
Right, it was asked for on Saturday, and it was delivered.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, because everything was being rushed, so therefore, wanted to take our time and do things the right way, and, and be able to get educated on the appointee nominee.
That's why it's not on the agenda tonight.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah.
It was, but it got pulled off.
It's not on the agenda tonight, then. So I guess my question, though, again, is what additional information are you seeking from the city administration?
We can get all those details, but the motion was just amend that resolution right now, so...
I think they received it, I think he just...
Okay, I was just trying to understand scope of work, so I can be prepared.
Yeah, and I would, I would recommend that if the councilman or any council member has a specific request for information, just be sure to ask the administration, they'll, I'm sure, provide it for you, but...
It's just one time to read it.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think he's asking, I mean, he's, he's read off the resolution, basically, the qualifications in the mayor's eyes, and why he's made the appointment, and his evaluation, and if there's something more specific that you're not provided, that you're asking for, then just ask for it, and if it's, you know, should be, I'm sure the administration will provide it.
I think there are certainly some things that you sent that are on here, there might be a few that aren't, so obviously, we'll address that directly, because the list is quite detailed of what he's looking for, so if there's something that's missing, well, we can ask for it.
We'll request it, and review, yeah.
Is it, there's a motion on the floor from Councilman Wells, so I need a second?
I second that motion.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
New business, number one, a resolution to approve Hammond Harley-Davidson to serve free beer on premises at its annual Bike Night on March 21, 2019, from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM at 1530 Southwest Railroad Avenue, Hammond, Louisiana 70403. Is there anyone here on this?
Sorry, you guys, this is my first city council meeting.
Oh, that's okay.
My name is Jayden Desatelle, and I do work at Hammond Harley-Davidson. We want to give out free beer, March 21, from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. There's a wristband system that we use, with a responsible vendor giving out and IDing, and they, everybody gets three beers a person.
Is there, is there like a punch card, or something that says that it's only three beers?
They mark off on the wristbands, so it's no employees, serve beer, we contract in a responsible vendor, with a bartender, like, the bartender, and they mark off wristbands. They've done it in the past, and it's worked well, so...
Are there insurance requirements for, for your...
It's covered under our insurance, like, all that's done, I just have to submit a form to ATC with y'all's permission, saying that I can do it.
Has this been done in the past, or is this the first time?
Yes, this has been done in the past.
Ma'am, let me ask you a question, is, is the beer going to be provided in the parking lot, or inside the building?
It's going to be inside the building.
Okay, because that, that implicates the open container law.
Okay.
So your folks need to know that they can't take the beer from the building outside the building.
Okay, yeah, it'll be inside.
So they're not asking for a waiver of the open container law, they're just asking for approval of the event.
Yeah.
And the responsible vendor has the vendor card.
Yes.
Which shows that they received the education certification.
And everyone understands that, hey, you have to be 21 to drink?
Yeah, yes, yeah.
All right, pleasure of the council?
Motion approved.
Second.
Come on, Wells.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number two, a ratify, and, a ratify in award bids for sidewalk and drainage improvement, CM Fagan Drive, received 2/22/19.
Good evening.
Is that supposed to be a resolution?
Sir, ma'am?
Yes.
Okay, a resolution to ratify.
You should've got the bid tab, it looks like this, there's two of them, there's a big one and a little one, the big one is a detailed itemization of every single item that was cited on the bid, and the, and the small one, which is eight and a half by eleven, says bid summary at top, is probably the one you want to look at, because it's a little easier to read. We had nine bidders, two of which we're recommending that we consider non-responsive because of the way they filled out their bid form, they did not, they didn't fulfill some of the specifications in the completion of the bid form. Unfortunately, one of those two was a low bidder, but maybe he was a low bidder because he used the wrong bid form, so that's, as far as I'm concerned, he didn't even bid the right job, that's how that has to be viewed. The low bidder, as you can see from the list, if you look in the far-right column of that list, I have bid rank, low bidder was Wainwright Construction, there were two alternates, alternative number one was the upgrade of the pedestrian handrails from galvanized, I'm sorry, steel, standard barrier rails to a more decorative vertical, I don't forget what column, there's a name for what, the spindles, vertical spindles all the way down, it was 625 feet, and Wainwright bid $62,000 for that extra cost, so obviously, I don't think that's a good investment, and the second alternate is to extend the sidewalk from the Ring Road, Hammond Square Mall Ring Road, to Magnolia. So the base bid is a sidewalk with handrails from J. W. Davis, where it stops now, down Fagan Drive on the south side, crossing the bridge, and ending up at, pretty much at the Ring Road where the theater parking lot is, if you know where the Hammond AMC Theaters are, that's where the sidewalk will stop, and then the second alternate, if we decide we have money later in the fiscal year, or next fiscal year, we can always add that back into this contract, but at the moment, we do not. So the low bid was $240,385, if you can see that under the base bid price, 240,385. So I recommend awarding to the low bidder, Wainwright Construction, for the base bid in the amount of $240,385. Our budget was 241.
That was my question, thank you, right under budget.
Right under budget, just makes me happy.
Any questions by the council? Pleasure of the council?
Make a motion approved. Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number three, a resolution, one, to ratify bids, received February 15, 2019, for sewer system rehabilitation, city of Hammond, fiscal year 2018. Number two, approving the award of a contract to the lowest responsible and responsive bidder, pending verification of contractor eligibility by the Louisiana Office of Community Development, and three, authorizing the mayor to enter into this contract following verification. Charles Borchers.
This is going to seem a little familiar, because Chuck was just up, just up here to talk about a previous project, so you're going to have a bid summary, you're going to have a bid tabulation, which is that longer, more detailed form. I also included, because this is an older project, we actually applied for this originally in the summer of 2017, so it's been a process to get us to this point, but you should have a project description, the way this is set up, there's a quick summary of where the money's coming from, and how much, and a brief project description, and an additional detail, including the history of the project, and I also included some, some maps. Most of this project is taking place in District Three, your district, Mr. Wells, there is a small part of the District Four, that's that section that's essentially connecting Thomas Street down. The, the area we're talking about is roughly bound by Thomas Street to the north, Palmetto Street to the south, Mooney to the east, and Morrison to the west. It's a sewer system improvement project, we're going to be going in like we've done in Old Hammond and other specific areas where we had some sewer system problems, we're going to be lining the deficient pipes, it will start off with a sewer system evaluation survey, we'll actually go in and do smoke testing, and video cameras, and cleaning, to identify specifically what we need to line, there may also be some actual physical repair work that's involved. We had six bids on the project, the lowest responsive and responsible bid was in the amount of $532,365 from Institiform Technologies LLC, so we're seeking the council's approval to proceed with that low bid. We have, since I initially submitted this to the agenda, we have received verification from the state that Institiform is fine to go forward with the bid, so the contingency language in the resolution still applies, but we actually have had, had answer from, from the state. Any questions?
Have we ever done any work with Institiform?
Yes, we've done a lot of work with Institiform.
So just so everyone can hear, this is a $675,000 grant, so it's not city money, and we're ma-- and we're doing a $90,000 match, which has already been budgeted.
Correct, the bu-- the budget was, the budget of $90,000 was for engineering work, most of which has been completed, that was necessary to actually submit plans and drawings, engineering plans and drawings to the state for approval. This project is a little bit different in the sense that you actually have some things that you do before they actually finalize the contract, they call it contract clearance, environmental work, et cetera. So the low bid is, is, again, 532,365, our, our budget for construction was 675, so we have a significant savings there, we'll probably keep that in contingency for the time being, if it's needed for any unforeseen developments.
Good use of city funds, for sure.
Absolutely.
Pleasure of the council?
I move to approve.
I second that motion.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number four, a resolution supporting the submission of a litter cleanup supplies affiliate grant application for up to $2,000 in litter cleanup supplies for Keep Hammond Beautiful.
Keep Hammond Beautiful is our litter cleanup organization, some of you may have had the ability to partner with them and do volunteer cleanups, they usually do them about once a month. Every year, Keep Hammond Beautiful is eligible to apply for a grant through Keep Louisiana Beautiful, which is the state's litter cleanup organization. This year, the state has actually divided that larger grant to multiple smaller grants, one of them is a litter cleanup supplies grant, the reason this is up to $2,000 in cleanup supplies is because there's actually no money, it actually, will actually be awarded cleanup supplies, so we're going to go ahead and, with your approval, submit an application for up to that maximum amount in litter cleanup supplies.
Questions? Pleasure of the council?
Make a motion approved.
I second that motion.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number five, a resolution, number one, supporting the submission of a $15,000 application to the Cynthia Woods Mitchell Fund for Historic Interiors, for the preservation and restoration of the interior of the Levi Building, a designated historic structure, and two, supporting a cash match of at least 15,000.
This is a, is a new project that we're working on, a couple of years ago, we were fortunate to get a grant from Louisiana Division of Historic Preservation to put a new roof on the building, it was a $20,000 grant with about $57,000 in matching fronts from the city. The Levi Building is a city building, it currently is home to the Hammond Regional Arts Center, so we are responsible for the maintenance of the building, it is a very historic building, one of the earlier buildings in Hammond, dates back to about 1916, so it's eligible for these historic preservation dollars. When we were doing the roofing project, we were informed that there were some issues with those display galleries, window galleries, window displays in front of the building, some of it had been water damaged from the leaking roof, so what we're trying to do here is get into those spaces and renovate those spaces, correct those, those deficiencies in the structure, there's, there's paint, there's, there's molding that's come at, come down, some substructure, substructure, rather, that has to be repaired. It is a dollar-for-dollar match, we can apply for up to 15,000, so the maximum match required by the grant will be 15,000, if we get less, it would be less than 15,000, and I would be coming back to the council at that point to, to get approval for the actual match, based on the award amount.
Should it not read, "Supporting a cash match of up to 15,000"?
We're, we're planning on submitting a $15,000 grant, so just for the sake of simplicity, if we have submitted a $15,000 grant, it's a $15,000 match.
The only reason, I just, I don't know if it's even possible, but say you want to do a project that's well over 30,000, and we have 15,000 from them, and we've promised to pay, you know, at least 15, and then are we obligating ourselves to make sure that the city's covering the rest?
No, at this stage, this is just the application, so all you're doing is basically saying that you approve us to submit the application, we're not committing to any, anything at this point. When, if we receive a contract, I will come back to the council, I'll give you the details of the contract, hopefully you'll have a copy of the contract to look at, and at that time, we'll know what amount we're receiving, and what the match amount will be. If anything changes between then and now, if, if we determine that it's going to cost more than 30,000, we will bring that information to the council as well, but the grant will only require a match of 15,000 if we apply for 15,000, which is the intent.
Okay. Questions, comments? Pleasure of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Final adoption of an ordinance, number one, final adoption of an ordinance for an expanded conditional use, request by Enrico Rogers to allow a mobile home on lot 24, block nine, Greenville Park subdivision at 107 West Newman Street, zoned RS three, recommended approval with conditions by zoning commission, the approval shall be with the understanding that such use is a personal right that expires upon the change in occupancy and ownership of Enrico Rogers, and two, must meet all placement requirements. Pleasure of the council?
Make a motion approved.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number nine, introduction of an ordinance and set for public hearing. Number one, introduction of an ordinance for an expanded conditional use, request by Marcella M. Cryer, applicant, to allow for a group care facility consisting of no more than eight individuals at lot one, block three, Sherry Drive, extension of College Town Subdivision, located at 1208 West University Avenue, zoned RM two, recommended approval. Tracy Shalacy.
I'm back. We're asking for, to set a public hearing on March 12 for this, allow, to allow for a group home at this location, and the zoning commission recommended approval.
So we'll talk about it more at the next...
Correct, that's a public hearing.
Motion to introduce...
Make a motion, do we introduce?
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.[1606.04]
Councilman DiViterio?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Public hearing is set for March 12, 2019.
Thank you.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I second that motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Now we'll do the Wilbur Dangerfield Award of Excellence program. It's my pleasure for us to do the Wilbur L. Dangerfield Award of Excellence ceremony tonight, and thank you all for coming. First, we're going to have Reverend Dr. Mac H. McCraney to lead us in prayer.
Praise his heavenly Father, the God of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob, the giver of all spiritual benediction and grace, the author of everlasting life. Father, we're grateful that we can come before thy presence to ask that you would forgive us of all trespasses, that you would look upon us with favor. We pray thy blessings upon every house that is represented here tonight, every soul that is breathing air. We ask, my Father, that you would bless all. Look with particular care upon the recipient of the Wilbur Dangerfield Award and the person of Bishop Larry Jackson. We thank you for his service to mankind. We thank you for all that he does. We ask, my Father, that you would continue to allow him to lean upon you, and that you would guide him as he makes his trek through these mundane shores. My Father, we thankful for the church that he lead, ask that you would keep them together and keep them, my Father, to reaching higher heights. We pray, my Father, for this administration of this city, the mayor, and all of the councilmen. Pray for all that makes this recipient or this ward possible. And, Father, we realize that our sojourn on these mundane shores, rapidly coming to close for some, won't be very long for any. But, my Father, when we come to the last mile of the way, we pray that you would open the porters of heaven and welcome us out of this mundane land into a land of everlasting joy, that we may be with you in your service and in your presence forever. These in all blessings we ask, in the name of Jesus, your son and our Savior. It's in his name we pray. Amen.
Welcome, everyone. Ms. Arlene, welcome. We're blessed to have you here, and also Mr. Wilbur, everything that he has done while his tenure, during his tenure with the city of Hammond. And this is an exciting night, once again, and I'm glad to be a part of it. Thank you for letting me be a part of it. You want to say a few words, you want to wave, or you can bring Ms. Bianca. You look like you're ready to talk. I'm going to let you talk.
I would just like to say good evening to everyone, and I'm so excited about seeing you here. And first of all, I really would like to thank the past mayor and councilperson that started this Wilbur Dangerfield Award of Excellence. And secondly, I would like to thank our returning mayor and our new councilperson that saw fit for this to be continued, and for that, I would say great, I'm grateful. And I'm so excited about, again, like I said, I'm so excited about seeing all our new councilpersons, all our visitors, and I'm asking the citizens and the community of Hammond to try to support this mayor and the councilpersons, so that they will be able to continue doing what Dangerfield Heart was, and you know his heart was the city of Hammond. And again, I would like to say thank you all, and may God bless you, and good evening. Good evening. My name is Bianca Roberts, and it is my privilege and pleasure, on behalf of the Wilbur Dangerfield Committee, to welcome you here this evening. We are delighted to have you with us to celebrate the life and legacy of Bishop Larry Jackson. Thank you for coming. Because so many of you have taken time to be here with us, it's a testament to the life and service of Bishop, that Bishop Jackson lives. The Wilbur Dangerfield Committee exists to recognize African-American members of the Hammond community that have fought for the equality and success of African-Americans, specifically in Hammond, Louisiana. Again, thank you for joining us for this very special occasion.
Good evening. I would like for each member of the committee to please stand, Ms. Bianca Roberts, Ms. Gwen Young, Ms. Laura Knighton, and Ms. Dorinda Wells. Thank you. Whereas in 1926, Dr. Carter G. Woodson, historian and founder of the Association of the Study of Negro Life and History, created Negro History Week to recognize the accomplishments of Negroes throughout the history of the United States. Whereas in 1976, the celebration of Negro History Week was introduced, included the entire month of February, I'm sorry, and became known as Black History Month, a federal-recognized nationwide celebration that provides opportunity for all Americans to reflect on the significant roles that African-Americans have played in the shaping of the United States' history. Whereas, many African-Americans have contributed to the development of the city of Hammond, and their accomplishments input our lives through their work, education, healthcare, business, and government. Whereas, the Hammond City Council endeavors to enhance the council's relationship with the Tangipahoe African American Heritage Museum, the Second Sunday Breakfast Organization, and the Martin Luther King Park Association. Whereas, the city of Hammond desires to create an annual award to recognize individuals within the Hammond community, including Tangipahoe Parish, who have played a positive impact to the lives of African-Americans. Whereas... Just, oh, I read that part already, okay. Now, be it resolved that the city of Hammond will present each year during the second meeting in the month of February, the city of Hammond, the Wilbur L. Dangerfield Award of Excellence, to a deserving citizen or citizens who have made significant accomplishment that positively reflect on the city of Hammond, or who represents through their actions and commitment to the willingness to go the extra mile to make a positive impact in our communities in the city of Hammond. There shall be a committee of five members for that purpose of selecting the recipient or recipients of the city of Hammond, Wilbur L. Dangerfield Award of Excellence. The committee shall be made up of the following: a nominee from the Tangipahoe African American Museum, a nominee from the Tangipahoe Parish Library, and a nominee from the Martin Luther King Park Association, and two at large appointed by the council president. Each nominating group shall provide the full name and complete contact information of this nominee to the city clerk. The term of the appointee shall be no more than one year, and the city council president has designated, shall chair this selection committee. So this is the purpose, the occasion of how things were set in place to provide this award that will be given on tonight.
Good evening. Let's loosen up. We're here now, and thank everyone for coming. It is just so wonderful that you have taken the time from your schedule to join us on tonight. And we know why we're here. But the Martin Luther, Martin Luther King, there, I go back to January. The Wilbur L. Dangerfield Award of Excellence Committee would like to, at this time, acknowledge those persons whom we have invited, and we would like to begin by asking the wife of our honoree to please stand, Elder Robin Jackson. Thank you, Elder Jackson. Next, we'll just ask family and friends to stand. That should be everybody else. Let's just stand up, okay? All right. Family and friends, family and friends, family and friends. Thank you so very much. Thank you. I did that really just to loosen myself up. Isaiah, chapter 40, from the NIV. He gives strength to the weary and increases the power of the weak. Distinctively, there is a difference between standing on another man's shoulders to peep at glory and walking with God to witness it firsthand. The biography. Bishop Larry Jackson was born April 25, 1952, to Woodrow Wilson and Audrey Valentine Jackson at Independence Tangipahoe Parish, Louisiana. He is a product under the ministry tutelage of Reverend Dr. Samuel C. Brown, being reared at Mount Pleasant Baptist Church in Hammond, Louisiana. Larry Jackson is a successful product of Greenville Park High School. He is the current pastor, only pastor, and proud pastor of Second Community Outreach Ministry in Hammond and Slidell, Louisiana. He is the proud father of Tiffany, Eric, Derek, Damon, and Taquilla. His seven grandchildren are Jeremiah, Archie, Archie Junior, I'm sorry, A.J., Aria, Sean, Devia, Tiana, and D.J. His work career includes Shell Narco Chemical Plant, and also retirement from the city of Hammond. He is a prayer counselor, advisor, carpenter, a fisherman for souls to be saved through Christ. He is the sponsor of the second and fourth Saturday feeding program at Second Community Outreach Ministry, and no joke, y'all, there we really do feed over 700 mouths within this city, children, basically. So we thank you, Pastor, for leading us in that work, and it is sponsored. It is sponsored out of our own pockets. And that takes me back, Ms. Arlene, to when Mr. Dangerfield was living, and we were all working here with the city, and he would say to us, "Now, after you pay your tithes, put another 10% behind, so that we can do something for the children." And then he would have us to put that money together and put that food together, and he'd say, "Now, take it down there to the church, Arlene. That's where they fixing the plates." And we would feed the children, and that was the seed that was planted. And we just thank God that somehow our pastor has picked up that baton and has a loving heart, especially for children in this community. Pastor Jackson has also established a mission project in the name of our church, Second Community Outreach Ministry, at Liberia Africa, to minister and feed the multitude. He will be returning on that mission in November of 2019. He's also led us to Moore, Oklahoma, Port Arthur, Texas, and other storm-ravaged areas where we have witnessed firsthand how devastation affects the lives of people. So we too are being led in the caring and nurturing of other people. He likes boating, fishing, camping, enjoys moments of solitude like we all do. His siblings include Betty Crumbie, Mello Pack, Dorothy Bridgewater, Curtis Alford, Rosetta Jones, Patricia Jackson, Hilda Mae Jackson, Charles Banks, Latitia Banks, Beverly Banks, Wilma Banks, Samuel Wilson, Gloria Jax, Woodrow Wilson, Jr., Ether Perry, Mary Harris, and Mary Lagard, Martha Lagard, I'm sorry, Martha Lagard. Ladies and gentlemen, the biography. The presentation of the award, Mrs. Dorinda Wells. Bishop Jackson.
Pastor Jackson, it's a pleasure and an honor to give you this plaque in memory of my friend and my classmate's husband, Mr. Wilbur Dangerfield. We were very close, and we know that you deserve this. Those that don't know will know that this is a good man, and they say the steps of a good man, follow him. Thank you, Pastor Jackson. Hammond City Council, Wilbur L. Dangerfield Award of Excellence, presented to Bishop Larry Jackson for your individual achievements and your commitment to making a positive difference in the Hammond community, through your selfish willingness to go the extra mile to improve the quality of life, anyway, in the African-American community. An individual has not started living until he can rise above the narrow confines of his individualism, concerns to the broader concerns of all humanity, spoken by the late Martin Luther King, Jr. February 26, 2019. Pete Pinto, Mayor, Johnny Blunt, District, Council District Four, Michael A. Williams, Council District Two, Jason Hood, Council District Three, Janice Carter Beard, Council District Four, and Lamar Marsh, Council District, y'all know what I'm saying, Five. I present this plaque to you with all our love.
Wow. It's a danger when you put a preacher behind a pulpit and give him a microphone. But I'm going to try to be brief. First of all, I give thanks to God, because without him, I can do nothing. Second, to this council, I want my mayor, Mr. Dangerfield, to the committee, to family and friends, I thank you. Three things, and I'm going to go to my seat. Number one, I give honor to God. Number two, to my pastor, who always taught us, all of your blessings are not for you alone. Number three, my mother always taught us, when somebody do something for you, the least you could say is, "Thank you." I thank you, thank you, thank you.
Let's give our honoree another hand clap. Bishop Jackson, you will receive another plaque, because a lot of that information on that plaque is wrong. That's the old, that's the old council, and the district is wrong on that, too. I think they had Lamar District Five, so you, yeah, so you will receive another plaque in a couple of days. So if you had a spot picked out, you could just hold that spot. Well, again, I would like to thank everybody for coming out tonight to celebrate in the Wilbur Dangerfield Award. However, it would be nice if you would come out in numbers like this to city council meetings as well, because, you know, this is your city. You need to represent your city. So with that being said, again, I'd like to thank everybody, and I'd like to thank Mr. Dangerfield, indeed, for being out tonight to represent their family in the honor of her husband and her father on tonight. With that being said, I'll go ahead and bless the food and get out the way, so I know some people are either ready to get them a good snack or something in their stomach. Let us pray. Most grace and love return to heaven, and, Father, we just thank you right now. Father, we just give you glory, honor, and praise for who you are, just thanking you right now for your darling son, Jesus. Father God, we thank you for this food that was prepared for our body. We ask that you bless the hand that prepared it, take away sickness and disease, that even though we leave this place, we never leave your presence. Traveling grace is ours as we go. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.